This is a public meeting of the Denver Springs City Council held October the 27th, 2025 here in the courtroom of the Municipal Building and 116 Off Range Avenue here in Denver Springs, Louisiana. All notices have been posted and the media has been notified as required by law. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Poole to lead us in the indication of the pledge of allegiance, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we're homeless again to invite you into this chamber as we go about the business of this community this evening. Father, we ask for your guidance that you would, again, be a light into our path and a lamp unto our feet. Father, that we would bring honor and glory to you with all that we do as we give you thanks for your blessings upon blessings that you continue to pour out upon this great city. So, Father, we ask for your blessings upon this administration, upon these employees, and upon everybody who has chosen to call this place home. Thank you again for all that you do, Father, and we just ask for your guidance and protection in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Dugos, here. Gilbert?
Here.
Lam Williams, here. Poole?
Here.
Wesley?
Just two things to remind everybody of.
Halloween will be on the 3rd/1st, which is Friday evening from 6:00 to 8:00, like we always do. And then there was a special event this morning. Sheen was not with us, huh? So, this morning, the news media came out. Roger Wilder had gotten a special approval from the legislature of this session to rename or should say name Florida Bo- uh, excuse me, Range from Florida Boulevard to Rushing. It's gonna be called Corporal Shawn Kelly Memorial Boulevard in his honor. Obviously, addresses won't change and that sort of thing, but it's a memorial highway authorized by the legislature, so that was this morning. And we're glad to see that recognition of the service to the city. All right, so we move on now to item one, approve as published in the Official Journal minutes of the October 9th, 2025 City Council meeting. Motion by Wesley. Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk.
Dugos, it's Gilbert.
Yes.
Lam Williams, yes. Poole?
Upstate.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item two, authorize condemnation of 971 Centerville Street Northeast. I think that's Stephanie?
Yes. This is the old vet hospital, and we have gone, I'm gonna pass down pictures of it. We have gone around and around with this property for quite some time trying to figure out ownership of the property. We have finally hired Philly Leach to be an absentee attorney in this case to kind of represent the property owners that may or may not be missing from the case since the title is not very clear. He has evaluated the property on behalf of whatever owners do have an interest in it, and he's agreed with the recommendation to condemn the building. There have been several different people who have talked about buying the building, but it's no- nothing's ever actually come to fruition with it. There are a lot of links on it, and so I'm not sure that it is sellable for that reason. We've had a lot of problems with drug activity in the building, with homelessness in the building, things that our first responders would encounter if they had to go in here. And so, there's a lot of concern with those things. So, Mr. Leach presented to the Department of Housing Appeals at their last meeting and recommended condemnation. And we have bids for demolition structures, which don't need to come today, are all still good. The lowest bid for the demolition is John's Movement Development, including this slab that is there. He has the lowest bid of $30,500. So, we're asking you to approve that condemnation demolition of the building.
Motion to approve.
Before we proceed, could I ask, was there not an alternate plan considered for...
So, we have approached DOTD about possible purchase of that property to see if they would like to advance that interchange, but they have not gotten back to us. We had another local church that was considering the purchase of that property, but have not been able to work out any kind of a deal with the owner. The owner himself is just watching. So...
He's also nobody.
Right. At this moment, it's also nobody, so we may have an opportunity down the road. So, Stephanie, just for a clarification, so once it is a demo, okay, we have a clerk, will that thing ever be able to be sold?
Yes, so, I mean, we'll have a lien at the cost of the demolition, which would have to be paid back in the sale. But it could be donated to the city at any time, or it could, you know, somebody could purchase it in bail. I thought he already donated it. He came to the council meeting, he came and talked about donating it, but it never actually happened because it wasn't clear whether he had vested title on it or not.
What happens to mechanic's liens if he, if we accept the donation?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to research that.
Good enough. So, we need a vote?
We have a vote.
We had a second by Dugos.
Okay. Madam Clerk, now call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Item three, authorize condemnation of 323 Edgewood Drive.
So, this one and the next one, 329, we're still waiting on bids to come back on the so we asked for the table for another two weeks while we wait for the bids to come back.
All right, so we need a motion to table item three.
So...
Motion by Poole.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Item four, we'd like to table that as well. Motion by Lam Williams, second by Poole. Madam Clerk, call for the votes.
Dugos? Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Item five, hold a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances for the city of Denver Springs, Chapter 106, by adding Section 33 relative to gas tap fees, including a provision regarding residential tap fees inside the city limits. So, we declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody in the audience that needs to talk about this or would like to? No man? Counsel?
I'll just, I'll be glad that this, because this came about between Darrell and I and Stephanie as well, she was kind enough to sort of act as a moderator in our conversations. And I don't think there was any significant disagreement between Darrell and I. It was, the bottom line was, could we, under any circumstances, use an outside contractor inside the city limits? And that's really the beef between these two different ordinances is, if you can imagine for a minute, not our whole area responsibility, but just the city limits. My desire is that you would never have within the city limits a standard residential job where somebody would pay a city rate here and next door would be a contractor rate, which is devised and compiled by the contractor. In other words, $1,200 for the city to do the job and the next door neighbor, a contractor does it, and it's $4,300. That disparity is the thing that I was hoping to avoid. And so, we had a really good conversation. I don't, again, we didn't really have any disagreement. It may have been, and I don't want to speak incorrectly for Stephanie, but it was really more of just her legal, what's the word I'm looking for? Just her jurisprudence that we, that we may not want to tie the hands of the city. What if it happened that you needed to use a contractor for an in-the-city job? And so, it's really up to the council, obviously, but it, the second one of these ordinances really addresses a situation that Darrell admitted is extremely unlikely to ever happen, and that is a residential job greater than a one-inch tap inside the city limits. Those three things would have to be met. In my ordinance, if those three are met, then it has to be done by city at a city rate. What is that again? It's one inch or less, residential, and inside the city limits. So, in other words, new construction, a 1,900-square-foot home is gonna fall into that. Bigger homes may not. Commercial is outside the realm of that. Anything outside the city limits is outside the realm of that. My concern is just with the city. So, that's really the, I'm sort of speaking to both of these ordinances, but that's the gist of the difference. One of them puts the limit that if it's inside the city limits and it's residential and it's one inch or less, then it will be done by city employees or at the city employee rate. Outside that, all bets are off. If it's a one-and-a-half-inch line, doesn't fall under this. Whoever needs to do it, does it. If it's outside the city limits, doesn't fall under the purview of this, whoever does it, whatever. If it's a commercial job, inside or outside the city limits, it's not covered by this ordinance, and whoever needs to do it, does it. So, is it fair to say that that...
Yeah, and getting back to that, Robert, I can't guarantee that a city crew will do the whole job. We might have to hire a welder to come in and hot-tap that, that gas main inside the city limits, outside the city limits. We don't have a welder on staff.
When's the last time you had to do that, Darrell? I'm not trying to...
I can't tell you a date, but, you know, it does happen. And I would say no more than three to five times a year, you know, if that much, you know? But in the old part of town, we do still got going up Range Avenue all the way to the end of the line up here, all the way to the, where our system ends at, is a two-and-a-half inch steel main. We don't have, you know, that odd size. It's same pipe. You have to hire a welder.
But that's two-and-a-half inches.
That's two-and-a-half inches.
So, it's not covered under this.
You know, so, well, you saying one inch or less, if you didn't run in the surface to a house or something like that, it's got a generator or something, you either gonna run three-quarter or one inch anyway, it's gonna be able to feed that house, you know?
Darrell, what about a case where there are maybe multiple houses being built in subdivision, and they all, and there's at least one individual that says, "I need this job done now," if you have four or five jobs ahead of them, and they were willing to pay for that third party to come in? Is that something that you would do, or would you just don't know? You gotta wait till the city can get to it?
That's one of the things we talked about. That's one of the things we talked about with the wording in this ordinance is if we, the only difference between the two, if you look at them side by side, is that in the first one, item number five, which is Robert's Way, D is different. It adds, in cases of residential installations inside the city limits involving a one-inch or smaller tap, taps will be completed by the city dumpsters. So, we talked a little bit about that wording, will be, should be, shall be, you know, that kind of thing, and leaned in on will be. So, no, I mean, if somebody said, "I have to do it now," they would not be able to. They'd have to wait. But again, we're talking about a very limited situation.
Darrell, can I ask, when's the last time you did a three-quarter inch residential tap inside the city limit?
Spotty. I can't tell you at any time. That's spotty. Whenever somebody wants a generator or something like that.
Which is getting more popular.
Which is, yeah.
It's, I mean...
Whenever everything's season runs up, you start getting phone calls.
Right, I'm sure.
You know?
And it takes a three-quarter inch to run a...
Three-quarter or one inch. It just depends on what size though, and how better they put in, or K.W.
Can you run a house and a generator off of one inch, or is the one inch just for the generator?
No, no, you can do it.
You can do both.
Yeah.
I understand, I mean, we all know, like, we're the city council, it's our, our jurisdiction, it's our area, but I, I mean, the city itself, we can't, we, our gas lines, our water line, I mean, all of it runs further outside of the city, so I don't think that, just saying, hey, if it's just in city, we only address this because Darrell has to address everybody. So, what do we say, like, oh, I'm sorry, only part of your job that we want to hear about is the people in the city.
But the ones outside aren't covered under our discussion today.
But they are under our gas department.
Yeah. And he's free to handle that however he needs to with either one of these options.
I think, I think Robert's whole angle here was to make sure that the people inside the city limits were covered first and foremost, and that they weren't subject to saying, no, you know, you, you're gonna have to get the contractor paid more when they may have the option of the department doing it.
I mean...
Pardon me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right. But my biggest concern is that, that, you know, Address 1,011, they paid $1,200, and Address 1,013, they paid $4,200. Like, I would file a lawsuit if that was me. And I would say that's...
I agree with you, Robert.
That's easily...
That is, that is something. But I can tell you, I mean, y'all know, I've been here forever now. This has never happened. This has happened, this is the reason why we're going through this, because we lost through a half-rock group. We're trying to hire them back right now. Jim, you know, you were excellent pipeline. You had to go through OQ stuff, operator qualification. You cannot put your hand on a piece of pipe or any component on a natural gas system now without being OQ qualified. You know, all our growth pretty well is not inside city limits. We all know that. Everything is happening to the southwest down on Forest Parkway and everything.
You gotta make the point that that's not covered.
Exactly, that's not covered, you know? But this here, the, everything right here is to get us back, to help us out on everything down there. I told the mayor, and I told Stephanie, I told you, Robert, we can handle everything inside the city limits. We can do that. We do not have qualified people to do the whole thing nowadays. Next, next, the end of next summer, if we got the crew that we got right now, you know, everybody's gonna be OQ qualified again, and things is gonna ease up on us. This is just to get us back because we have lost all our money to the bigger companies. It hit us, just like the police department, just like the fire department, it has hit us. I went to a meeting last week, I had a guy ask me, "How many more you already got trained? We need them."
Yeah.
It's happening.
So, what's your objection?
It's not, it's not, it's not...
What's your objection to the way that Robert wants to do it?
I don't see what's necessary. We have never did, we have never, never, never charged anybody like that.
So, so why not? Then what's the, so if that's the case, then what's the beef with it being codified?
I believe it's all right, much as Stephanie said.
Here's my two cents on it. Again, I think it's a very limited situation that we're talking about, so what I'm saying here may not happen. But if we have residents in the city that want something done now, their house is on line, a generator installed, whatever it is, I think they should have the option to be able to wait on the city and have the lower price to, for the city to get there in their time. Or if time is more important to them than paying a higher price, they should have the option to have it done now and hire a contractor to do it. The second version allows them to make that decision. We can still have a policy that says, we're going to send city workers to city houses at every possible time, you know? If the resources are available, you'll have that rate, but here's our time list of where we can get to you. When we're negotiating these, you know, bigger subdivisions outside the city limits that might want to come in, we can have those conversations with the contractors at that point to be able to say, okay, well, we can't get to you for this amount of time, or we have to, you know, we may leave you for a day to come do a job inside the city. We can, we can negotiate those kind of things with the contractor under the second version and still take care of what you're wanting to take care of, you know?
Let me quote Darrell just within the last five minutes. "We can handle anything inside the city limits." That was his quote.
That's as it stands today, yes, we can.
Okay, can I ask a question about that, though? We recently approved a subdivision of Hatchway, of Hatchway. How is that gonna affect you if they move forward next year?
Well, if this is a subdivision, it's gonna be one larger tap, right?
No, I know, I mean, that, that subdivision happens, it has to be a district regulator station in, and then main ran out through it, through a subdivision by a contractor.
With the contractor.
Exactly.
Yeah, these are gonna be...
On new construction.
Most of these are probably gonna be larger than one inch.
They, they reached out to us, they was. If they, if they do it, they are.
I feel like this is a, this whole issue, other than giving people the option, I just say, it's just like, I mean, to me, it's very, I feel like I'm missing something because it feels very simple to me. It's like, literally, if I want to mail something overnight and pay 20 bucks, I'm gonna do it, or I'll pay 45 cents and let it sit. Like, it's, I, I don't know, he is a great department head, he has ran his department well. We hear...
I didn't know that was being said.
No, but I feel like if we're putting regulation, writing ordinances on home where it's, part of it is just administration and not giving customers options that are within city limits, I, I mean, they, I feel like a customer, a constituent would call and say, hey, this is gonna be, you know, let the mayor know, we called, it would, I don't think that they would just sit there and be like, well, I'm gonna pay that extra money, I'll pay extra $5,000. If, they, they would ask the question, why is such-and-such coming in this contractor instead of the city handling it? And if they didn't, then I, it would be a failing of ours, and I feel like Darrell would answer to that. I, I feel like he would have a legitimate reason of why it happened that way, not just because we were failing at our job. I mean, I don't think that's the issue.
The second version does not guarantee them the option for the cheaper fee. The second option puts it in Darrell's lap to make that call, and nobody's questioning Darrell's ability to run that department and to run it extremely well, even in adverse conditions where he's struggling to keep all of his seats occupied.
And I mean, what, I'm not saying, I just think that's the, I don't think that you're questioning that. I believe you're coming from a great place, but I just, when you, like I said, I just feel like I'm missing something, and I don't know which concerns me because I don't like that feeling. Darrell, which, which one do you prefer, first or second? Which one gives you more ability to do your job as you, you've done so many?
Yeah, which one was it, Stephanie, I mean, you saw the second one, yeah.
Well, I suppose, I suppose I was gonna comment on, I, I don't have a problem if a person does not want to wait paying the extra. I mean, we can guarantee them the lower rate, it just, we just may not be able to get to them in their timeframe, and that's fair. If a person wants to pay the extra, I'm, I'm good with that.
That, that option is not provided for in this ordinance, though.
It is.
This second ordinance, if the city decides they're gonna do it today with a contractor, the owner of the home has no recourse. That's not written into this or codified in this at all.
No.
Now, would he do that? Of course not, but he certainly could.
It, it isn't here, Robert. It says installation may be completed by the city of Denham Springs or by a qualified installer selected by the city of Denham Springs.
Right. And, and, but we don't set that rating. If we bring the contractor in and their rate is three times our cost if we do it, you just pay it.
But there's two options. You can wait on the city to install it and pay the city rate.
But that's not in here.
And installation may be completed by the city of Denham Springs or by a qualified...
Right. And who makes that or? Who exercises the or? Darrell does, not the homeowner, according to this document.
Could, could we change the wording to make that specific?
We put with approval.
We can, we'll have to, we'll have to re-advertise it, and I think it's completely unnecessary. Nobody in the city runs their department like a dictatorship where they're gonna say, you pay this, or you don't get anything. It's always a discussion and a negotiation, you know, what do you need? How can I help you? Clearly, the city is going to present both options to a homeowner and give them the choice. We're not gonna mandate, unless there's a situation where we don't have qualified installers working for the city. I mean, they'll, they'll be offered the option, and they'll be told how long it's gonna take, right, here?
That's correct.
As far as I'm concerned, what we set in motion today is here long after, if it's not changed, after we're gone, and we live with the consequences of that. And I'm not saying, and I don't think Darrell takes it that I'm saying that there's concern about Darrell and his department. I'm saying we're tasked with setting a policy that the city is required to abide by, and I want to default on the side of protecting the city limits and the expectation of the home builder in the city, of which there are, by the way, so few, so few, inside the city. So, it really is a non-issue that, that I want to make sure that it's just provided for in perpetuity instead of with the good intentions of the administration today, I don't think is unreasonable. And if you do think it's unreasonable, I understand that, and it's, and I still love you. I just think you're wrong.
I don't think it's unreasonable at all. I just think it's unnecessary. We've been working on this since July. We had lots of conversations about this between me and Darrell, and then had a meeting with you, that we went over this exact language in my office, and it wasn't far up. So, now, we're gonna re-advertise it another time for another month for an unnecessary addition that we're just coming up with today. I mean, it...
Oh, no, last, I mean, I did ask for it to be an option for the, for the person who is building to be able to have that option. I did.
And that's why it says installation may be completed by the city of Denham Springs or by a qualified installer. That's the option. I don't know how to get in, clear on that language.
And I mean, I don't know, I don't think that you're asking, it's just very, I do not, like you said, it, it is, anything that we vote in is something that the city will live with forever. I hate to have extra nonusable or unused ordinances that are just there sitting on paper that people have to flip through. I mean, if, if it's, we're gonna build 100 houses in city limits over the next 30 years, I don't even know if it's needed.
My concern is just the lack of discretion, the lack of ability to, to make a choice. I want to give the homeowner the choice. If the city says, I can't get to it for three months, well, I know mortgage rates are about to go up, I need to get in this house, and I need it done now. I'm willing to pay to get it done now, because if the loan runs, it'll be better for me, or I don't have a place to stay. I need to get in this house now. That's my point, is, you know, we just need to be able to have some flexibility with...
I'm with you. I completely agree with your comments.
We can handle anything inside the city limits.
But now, I would say that today, because like you said, you know, we're, we're still looking at years and years having growth. We don't know what the future holds.
Unless we start annexing property, it really don't matter.
But, I mean, since we have a city-run utility, either way, it needs to, it's not, to me, it's not just about city limits, it's about the whole utility department and how we have responsibilities to every account there. So, if we're gonna give that ability to city residents, then it should be just every account. Darrell should have to be like, well, that's city limits, rules for them, not rules for them. Let's go through, well, I'm ran by this ordinance for this street and this street, but your neighbor, it's different, but they are all under the same utility company. Like, that's where I start worrying about, because it's still a business that's...
It's not uncommon or unprecedented for us to treat customers of our business units outside the city different than we do inside.
That's not necessarily right.
Well, I mean, it's there, and we voted on it.
I know, but...
Isn't what you're referring to, right? That's it.
Yeah, I mean, but, yeah, there are user fees, yeah, but, I mean, that, some of that could be, I don't know. Just...
As of right now, the only reason we're talking about this is because we're short of manpower. That's one of the biggest issues. And just to kind of address one of the things you mentioned about the OQ, because pipeline is a mode of transportation, it is, it is regulated by department transportation. And yes, the training and the, and the testing is extensive. I used to take hundreds of these things. It, it is a lot, so I think, you know, hopefully, we can, we can help, it can help maintain your, your, your staff, whereas we, we won't have this issue. Going back to what Jeff mentioned, and I'm with him, you know, I, I, I want to give you as much discretion as you can to do your job, and the fact you disagree with this, some parts of this, does give me pause.
Thank you.
And again, going back to what, what Jeff mentioned, I, I'm, I'm fine if, if somebody wants to pay the higher fee, and does that have to be regulated by, by law, or can that be an internal decision? Because, again, once you make something a law, it, it gives you less area to, to be able to, to be flexible to, to take care of people.
Just, so, sure, I'm thinking, right, what you're talking about is that would be no discretion, right? If somebody said, I want this now, and Darrell said, I can't get to you for three or four months.
Yeah, but he's saying, but he can't. Yeah, but he's saying, but he can. This is not going to happen. We don't have any developable property inside the jurisdiction that we're talking about.
You're optimistic.
You know what I mean? I'll go on the record right now, saying, I'll take all of Watson.
Here goes a whole.
But that's a whole different follow-up. What I'm saying. Sixteen, all the commercials.
I mean, I guess, just trying to tie the city's hands. I don't know, I guess having two options here is just trying to figure out what.
Well, the good thing about our discussion here is we've really litigated items five through eight all in one. So we can, and I don't have anything further to add. I think you know where I stand. We, I think we had a reasoned discussion about the differences and a chance to figure out where we stand on each of them. I have nothing further to add on.
And you were discussing the seam piping. Yes, it is a lot more of a barrier to mess with. But it's a two-and-a-half-inch line, but the taps, most of the taps are still going to be one-inch or under, right? So it's not, that's not really an issue there.
You base the tap size on what goes into the house, not what comes out of the service.
Exactly, yeah.
Motion for a public hearing?
Second. Motion by Lam Williams, second by Poole. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item six, approval ordinance, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances for the City of Denham Springs, Chapter 106, by adding section thirty-three relative to gas tap fees, including a provision regarding residential taps inside the city limits.
Motion?
Motion by Poole, and second.
I'll second.
Second by Lam Williams. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Okay, just a second before, this is the first one, right? I mean, this is, and then the.
This is the one that Robert.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
Dugos?
No.
Gilbert?
No.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Motion fails. Item seven, hold a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances for the City of Denham Springs, Chapter 106, by adding section thirty-three relative to gas tap fees. Declare the motion, I mean, the public hearing open. Anybody in the audience needs to make any comments?
Question for the public hearing?
Second, but I wonder what would happen if I made an alternate motion to add inside the city limits to that? No, just kidding.
Motion by Lam Williams, second by Poole, to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
No.
Wesley?
Motion passes. Mark for no debate now? Approval ordinance, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, what? For the City of Denham Springs, Chapter 106, by adding section thirty-three relative to gas tap fees.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lam Williams to approve.
Didn't we just do that?
That was the closing hearing.
I thought I remembered both of those in there.
There's too many.
Up in the air too much.
Second by Wesley. Madam Clerk, call for the votes.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Wesley? I mean, I'm sorry, Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
No.
Wesley?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item nine, authorize manager or landlord to enter to a M O A with GOSEPS Office of Cyber Readiness. We've had Steve talk to these folks and Michelle, and they want to be able to come in and with these guidance, look at our systems to make sure that we're not subject to any kind of cyber issues that are out there currently. And in the future, they'll help us with any issues that come up.
Motion to a barson.
Okay, motion, motion by Gilbert?
Second.
Second by Lam Williams. Madam Clerk?
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Williams to adjourn, second by Poole. Madam Clerk?
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Have a great evening, happy morning.
Good night, everybody. Don't forget the next council left now.